All right, we are back in session and for our last item of the day, I'll turn to the Chair of the School Turnaround Committee, Ms. Amy White. Ms. White?
You Chair Davis. Wow. Good afternoon. Thank you Chair Davis, and I'm Amy White, and I have the just great pleasure of leading this committee with J.B. Buckstun. We've been at this work for about a year now. Focused a lot of our early efforts on the Innovative School District and the second part of our efforts on the on school turnaround, and just exceptionally pleased to welcome two wonderful presenters to join us this afternoon. Dr. Gary Henry is not a stranger to us at all. He's been working on an initiative with North Carolina Turnaround. He's the, if you didn't know, he's the Dean of the University of Delaware's College of Education and Human Development. He's a professor and at the Joseph R. Biden Junior School of Public Policy and Administration. Boy, you're busy and you do research and you travel. I just can't imagine it. He is renowned throughout the nation in the field of education, especially specializes in policy, educational evaluation, educator labor markets, quantitative research, and all sorts of amazing awards. What I've learned through this bio is that you are really, really good at getting money for the research. Twenty-seven million dollars in in research dollars to help gather the information. He's been working with us for several years. He's here today to talk about the third round of information about the reform in our state's lowest performing schools. On Thursday, you'll be seeing a list of 69 of those schools as identified from recent data. So, we're interested to hear from Dr. Gary Henry. I'm going to go ahead and introduce Susan Allred as well, who will follow Dr. Henry. She's the co-author of Without Trumpets: Continuous Educational Improvement: The Journey to Sustainability with Dr. Kelly Foster. It's the story of how Kentucky, in six years from 2010 to 2016, built on the successes of the 1990 KERA to begin to hardwire improvement processes into the lowest performing schools in Kentucky. Today, y'all, we're talking about our state's lowest performing schools, and these two speakers are going to bring to us new information that will help capture the conversations that we'll be having tomorrow. So, Dr. Henry has a whole team of folks with him today, and I'm going to shoot it over to you. Welcome. We are so glad that you're here with us.
Thank you very much, Chair person. White, it's a it's a pleasure to be back today and back with the board. It's always an honor and a privilege to be here. I noticed that the first oversight is that I don't have the University of Delaware on the on the front slide, and I imagine the President of the university will have something to say about that before I get home, but but it is a real honor to be here. Just a really short bit of context about this. This this partnership with the State Board and DPI started in 2015, and the state made a very bold step to continue turnaround efforts in its lowest performing schools, following up on a judge, a set of turnaround that was ordered by Judge Manning in the Elandro case, and then raced to the top, and then a third generation, and we're into a fourth generation now. And that's not common. I think this is the only state who's who's taken that kind of initiative, so I think it says something. But a little bit about the context in 2015. 2015, the North Carolina became, to my knowledge, the first state to do assessments of of the students in grades K through three in order to take a look at those kids and their progress. When we were starting this effort, what we'd seen around the country was that because we only tested in grades three through eight, reading, math, and then some science, that we'd seen evidence that the younger children actually weren't served well in these reforms because they they didn't count in the accountability metrics. And so, we began to worry about that, but because North Carolina had taken that step, we included the analysis of the literacy exams in in our study, and I think it's very fortunate that we did. So, the we're going to turn now to Shelby McNeil and Jade Jenkins and Emily Penner, who when we started this, I wanted to find two of the best people in the country on early childhood literacy. So, we got in touch with Jade Jenkins, who's a PhD from University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, maybe about the time I was here, she was there, and Emily Penner, both of whom are faculty members at University of California at Irvine, and Shelby McNeil is one of my students at Vanderbilt. So, turn it over to you all now to to talk a little bit about the literacy results.
Hi. My name's Shelby McNeil. Like he said, I'm a third-year PhD student, and I'm excited and a little bit nervous to be here today. But to get started, research has consistently shown that early literacy skills are the strongest predictor of children's later reading achievement, meaning if we want to know how students are going to read in the future, we can look to their early literacy scores from previous years to know how they'll perform. And fortunately, like Gary introduced, North Carolina has a pretty substantial history of testing children's early literacy skills. So, starting in the 2013-14 school year, North Carolina began assessing early literacy skills using the M-Class Assessments. And to give a brief background on those, the M-Class Assessments focus on children in grades K through three, and there's two components of the test. So, the first component, commonly referred to as DIBELS, focuses on early literacy skills. So, can children identify their letters? Do they know their sounds? And then a second component of the test is Text Reading Comprehension, or TRC. So, when we put a book in front of them that's on their level, how well can they read that book, and how well can they comprehend what they're reading? The other interesting thing about the M-Class Assessments is that they're actually administered three times a year by a teacher or other person in the school building. So, they're administered at the beginning, middle, and end of the year. And so, based on this M-Class data... Did it move? Am I pushing the wrong way? Down? Side? Thanks, sorry. So, using this M-Class data, we went through and examined the trends over the past couple of years, and today we'd like to present five notable findings that we found based on this data. And they're all highlighted in the briefs that we put on your table as well. So, the first finding that we'd like to highlight... Which button was it? Do I keep pushing it?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry. So, the first thing we wanted to look at was when children begin school, when they enter formal schooling, how prepared are they in their early literacy skills? Because research has consistently shown that children from different socioeconomic backgrounds and with different early childhood education experiences come in with varying levels of skills. And what we found is that only one in three students in North Carolina is proficient in both early literacy and reading comprehension at the beginning of kindergarten. When we look specifically at students in the lowest performing schools, and when I say lowest performing schools, we're basing that based on the ESSA definition of the bottom 5% of Title I schools. In these low-performing schools, only one in five children enters kindergarten proficient in both early literacy and reading comprehension. And so, this fact is concerning because children who start out behind at the beginning of kindergarten are less likely to achieve proficiency by the end of third grade on those end-of-grade, third-grade reading exams. We found that only 36% of kindergarten students who enter kindergarten not proficient in early literacy skills achieve proficiency in reading by the end of third grade. And that translates to about approximately 20,000 students who are not brought up to proficiency by the end of third grade.
Thanks, Shelby. We're going to do a little bit of trading off today to talk about our findings. I'm Emily Penner from the University of California, Irvine, and I'm an assistant professor now, but in a previous lifetime, I was a second-grade teacher. And I, at the height of the No Child Left Behind era, and my school was among those that failed No Child Left Behind and closed. So, when I had the opportunity to work with Dr. Henry and this team, to look at early literacy development and to just take advantage of the fact that this state has been so thoughtful in collecting information to support instruction, I jumped at the chance. And when I was a second-grade teacher, I spent hours thinking about ways to monitor the progress of my students, particularly in their literacy development. But I didn't have the kinds of tools that are available to teachers now. And we think a lot about what's happening in our classrooms as early elementary educators especially, but equally important is what's happening in the times when those students are not with us, when they're at home with their families, when they're out in their communities. And what's novel about this data collection at this point is it also allows us to monitor progress that's happening over summer. And what we're finding is that we can track proficiency rates from students who leave our classrooms in the spring and show up in the fall across the state. And we find that unfortunately, there are about 60,000 students across the state that are no longer proficient in early literacy or reading comprehension. There we go. Now I'm with you. Oh, now you're with me. There are approximately 60,000 students across the state who are no longer proficient in early literacy or reading comprehension after summer break each year. So, that means all those hard efforts of all those great teachers across the state... Is my mic distorted?
Yeah.
Yeah. This sounds much better. Okay. Let me recap that for a minute because it sounded to me like it was cutting in and out. I appreciate that you let me know that, too. So, what we're able to see with the data that are that's being collected in classrooms and schools across the state is that there are 60,000 students who are leaving classrooms in North Carolina in early grades in the spring who are proficient, and by the time they come back in the fall, they're no longer proficient. We know that there's huge differences in terms of the kinds of investments that parents are able to make in their students over the summer, the kinds of activities that they provide, the kinds of enrichment they have. And for some students, it's falling short. And let me dig into this in a little bit more detail. It's actually going the wrong direction. I see what you're having, the problem you're having, Shelby. It's a... This is not... There we go. That's the picture I want. Okay. So, on this graph, you should see two lines. The top line, that's dark blue, demonstrates the change in early literacy proficiency rates between the end of the school year and the beginning of the subsequent school year in grades K through three. And what you should notice is that in the spring, 75% of students are proficient, and by the end of summer, only 70% are proficient. That means they're losing those early literacy skills your teachers are working so hard to build. Even more drastically is that there's a nine percentage point fall off in reading comprehension between the spring and the summer, and that's the red line that you see once they arrive back at the beginning of the school year. So, that means that we can actually figure out what's going, what's happening for students in terms of their literacy development. But what we don't know a lot about yet, but we suspect is going on, is that there are different initiatives in place in different kinds of schools. And the thing I want to note about these findings also is that a lot of times, we're thinking about things that are going wrong in just low-performing schools or schools with large concentrations of students in poverty. But here, we're seeing this kind of fall off in a lot of different kinds of schools. In both high-performing schools and low-performing schools, we're finding students that are experiencing this summer learning loss over the course of those summer months. So, we suspect that there are programs at work in many schools and districts across the state where educators might be putting in investments to try to stave off this summer learning loss. And that's something that we're interested in digging into more deeply in the coming year to try to learn about efforts that might actually be successfully holding off some of this fallback learning loss that's happening over the summer. So, hopefully, we'll get a chance to share some results with you on that at some point in the future. Thank you.
So, the the third finding we were interested in looking at was the effects of the North Carolina Transformation School Initiative on early child literacy skills. To give some background, the what we call NCT Initiative took place prior to the current school reforms under the Every Student Succeeds Act. So, it was implemented in the 2015-16 and 2016-17 school year in the 75 lowest performing schools, and many of these were largely rural schools. And Gary Henry and another co-author on this brief, Erica Harbackin, examined the effect of NCT on reading score growth in grades four and above. And what they found was negative effects in the second year of the turnaround program. And so, we were kind of worried, what kind of effect is this having on early-grade students? And what we found is that the NCT Initiative had no effect on students in grades K through three on their early literacy or reading comprehension skills, meaning that these K-through-three students in these NCT schools were performing about similarly to other students in similarly performing schools throughout the two-year intervention. And so, this leads us to the question of why did the NCT Initiative have no effect on early-grade literacy skills? And based on the qualitative work that we did, which was largely done by our team at Epic, some of them are here today, based on the qualitative data that they collected, we found that early grades were likely not the focus of the NCT Initiative, such as receiving instructional coaching, because early literacy skills and performance isn't really calculated into the state accountability system. And so, you know, early child performance isn't taken into account when calculating a school's proficiency rate or their growth rate. So, it just likely wasn't the focus of this initiative. The fourth trend that we'd like to talk about relates to the predictive validity of the early literacy scores. And so, as I talked about earlier, early literacy skills are the best predictor of later reading achievement. So, we wanted to look at when we when we look at these early literacy skills, how well are they predicting students' third-grade reading in North Carolina? And what we found is that these literacy and comprehension scores accurately predicted whether or not a third-grade student would be proficient at the end-of-grade reading exam with over 70% accuracy. And so, to break this down a little bit, for example, we could look at students' M-Class scores in first grade. And based on the models that we run, using these first-grade scores, we can accurately predict whether or not that student will be proficient two years later in third grade with, I think approximately... Oh, did I say that wrong earlier? Oh, sorry. 76% accuracy. And if we look at the third-grade scores, those predict third-grade reading with slightly over 80% accuracy. And so, the importance of this is that when we're able to identify early on students who are at risk of not achieving proficiency later in third grade, teachers are able to target instruction towards those at-risk students. So, for example, providing after-school tutoring or just spending more focused time with these students who are struggling. And the important thing is that we also found that students who are identified at risk earlier on, like in kindergarten, they're more likely to achieve proficiency than students who are identified later. So, specifically, students who were identified as non-proficient at the beginning of kindergarten, they were three times more likely to achieve proficiency by the end of third grade compared to students who are identified at the beginning of third grade, which again leads back to this point that if we identify these students earlier using this data, we're able to help them earlier to achieve proficiency. And I know Gary has mentioned that the accuracy rate of these tests is surprisingly high and is is doing a good job of predicting which students are going to achieve proficiency.
Hi. I'm Jade Jenkins. I'm an assistant professor at UC Irvine, Emily's colleague, and a proud graduate of UNC Chapel Hill Public Policy with my esteemed advisor right here. So, it is a career goal to actually use research, my research to influence policy. So, I'm really thrilled to be here. Thank you so much for having us. And so, as Gary mentioned, my area is early childhood policy. And so, one of the things we wanted to look at as a team was whether or not the idea of a statewide, universal screening could be seen as an intervention to actually improve student outcomes. North Carolina is a leader in the nation in providing universal early literacy screening. So, what we examined in this next piece of the research was whether or not, within a school, if we compare the racial and ethnic achievement gaps before early literacy assessments began to after, do we see a difference in the racial and ethnic achievement gaps? So, the idea that an assessment could serve as an educational intervention to provide more targeted educational supports for students, as building off of the findings that Shelby was just discussing, the earlier we can understand students' abilities, the better we are able to address them through classroom instruction. And so, what we found was that after the early literacy assessments began, within the same school, we see that racial achievement disparities on third-grade reading exams were reduced by approximately 22% in the years after early literacy assessments began. And importantly, these racial achievement gaps between white and non-white students, specifically between white students, Hispanic students, and Black students, this gap was reduced not by white students scoring more poorly on the exams, but by an increase in the scores of Black and Hispanic students. And so, what you can see on this graph here, this line in the middle represents the year that this universal assessments, the universal assessments began. And we can trace out that by the time these students get to third grade, we can see that within the same school, the reading scores are converging between these two groups. And so, this was really exciting for us to find because it's suggesting, and we hope to dig more into this and with some of the qualitative work and from hearing from you all, that teachers are better able to understand students' needs and address them early on, as early as kindergarten, because of these assessments were made available to teachers, and teachers are doing it, these assessments, for their students in large part, and able to react in real time with with the data to address with classroom instruction. And so, right here, we've just got a summary of everything we've just told you, these kind of five key findings from from the team. So, I want to, I'll leave these here, and we want to open the floor up for discussion since we just presented a lot of stuff and and want to make sure that we have some time to hear from you all before moving on.
Dr. Oxendine?
How are you defining proficient?
Great question. So, for the purposes of this brief, we're defining proficiency on the early literacy and reading comprehension portions of the M-Class as students who are scoring at or above benchmark. So, yes, if they're below, or I think the other category is way below, then they're scored as not proficient.
May I ask another question, then?
Yeah.
What is benchmark?
So...
Is that a bench of a benchmark set by our department?
No. And so, it varies depending on the grade level of the student and the age.
I see.
And it's specific to the two different assessments that are administered for literacy and reading comprehension.
So, it's it's defined in the instrumentation?
Exactly.
Thank you. Just to follow up to make sure I understand. So, the definition of the one in three students who are proficient in both at the beginning of kindergarten, the benchmark is where you would expect to see a child starting at kindergarten?
That's exactly right. Yeah. So, there's three assessment periods during the year. The benchmark at the beginning of kindergarten is sort of the expectation based on these assessments for where a child... assessments for where a child would enter kindergarten and those skills are expected to accelerate developmentally in each of those time periods.
Readyness.
At the beginning of the year, absolutely.
So for finding number five about racial achievement disparities being reduced by approximately 22% in the years after early literacy assessments began, my question is, were there other indicators that contributed at greater proportionality to reductions in those racial disparities such as school leadership or teacher quality effectiveness or, or other indicators that we could also point to?
Great question. So these, this final, this finding number five, what we did was compare the achievement gap in the same school before and after. So this maybe isn't exactly what you're asking, but we're able to control fully for the school context, which would capture things like you're mentioning, like school leadership and the kind of school culture. So while we don't have direct assessments of that for each of the years in these data, we were able to control, hold that constant to isolate the impact of these, of the early literacy assessments. So, but it would be great, for example, if we had teacher working conditions data, we could map onto every single year and can look at that. But we don't have those measures for all the years.
I just want to go back to Dr. Oxendine's question because I think that's a great one about benchmark and what we're looking at. So I teach second grade and I'm very familiar with M-class. And in order for us to really understand what these tests are measuring, we have to understand the two different DIBELS and then TRC. And so in that DIBELS, in kindergarten, they're going to be looking for reading readiness. Can they identify a word? Can they identify the title of the book? And then into second grade, it's going to be how many words per minute read and how much they can retell to you. Traditionally, the majority of our students are on grade level in that aspect in second grade, in that DIBELS part. They are reading enough words per minute and they can orally recite to us what they read, which is a huge strength. However, they're marked at below grade level in TRC. They'll read a book to you and they have to answer five questions. They normally are able, most of them, to answer recall questions, but they struggle with inference questions. And then there was a writing component where they have to have two written responses with two details each. So if they get the answer right, but they miss the details, they go down a level. And that's huge in understanding this conversation. We have to understand what tests we're giving the children. Because we have students who are reading on grade level, who feel like they are failures because they're not writing with enough details. And that's a different measurement. And so when you look at this data, my question is causation versus correlation. Are these students not performing in kindergarten and in third grade because it's a symptom of poverty? Even though the two tests might not relate to each other? And those are things I think we need to keep in mind.
So what we are, we are able to really carefully control for those, those extremely important factors you're talking about by looking at kids within the same schools and even looking at kids over the course of time as they received more and more years of M-class dosage. So the greater number of years they received for kids in the same schools, holding poverty and all these other demographic conditions constant, we are seeing the importance of these screening exams. And to your point, in looking at how exactly the, the early literacy interventions might actually influence achievement, what we saw was that on the TRC specifically, that black students and Hispanic students made greater gains over the course of the years as their dosage or that as they received more and more years of these early literacy assessments. So more of this monitoring is benefiting, is benefiting different groups of students and again, holding constant all of these important other predictors of achievement that you're talking about. And I don't know if others had.
27 million. All right, so here's what I'm understanding from these five. And I want to connect it to, to our policy and our framework. So if the, the state's logic model that says we need to know earlier where students are is fairly solid. And the, and the use of a high-quality screener that we know is connected to third-grade outcomes is an important thing because in and of itself, it's providing data that when districts use that data well and schools and teachers use that data well, we're seeing reductions, gap reductions. Despite the fact that we've got some money and focus on summer programs to help reduce summer learning loss, we're not seeing returns in that, but we should probably not abandon that because of the significant loss we're seeing. We've got to figure out how to do that better. So our focus and attention on summer camps or similar kind of interventions would be important. But then obviously, something in the way that we're supporting districts and that some districts are supporting their principals and teachers to use this data well, we're, this is where our logic model is kind of breaking down. And it may not be that the model we have in place is wrong. It may be some of our interventions are just not as effective as they should be. So it, does that sound right, like the story we should be telling ourselves? And if it's right, are there some specific interventions at either a state level or that we should be working with our district partners to be thinking about that you think are high-leverage practices that you've seen other states or the districts?
There's a lot of great questions mixed in that question. Thank you for that really excellent summary. I think that there's a couple of things that, I, I think you're right on in terms of thinking about the logic model and in terms of recognizing some of the forward progress that's been made in the state and also in thinking about not abandoning that progress at this, at this point. I think there's a few spots where we're starting to see some questions where it would be useful for us to dig in a little bit more deeply, to learn a little bit about some of that summer programming, for example, to think a little more carefully about what our assessments are telling us about which skills are keeping students from grade-level mastery at particular moments and if those are the same kinds of skills at different points, if they're really a piece of the assessment we're using or the whole thing. And then the question is from there, what other kinds of interventions might be useful? You know, Gary might have something to jump in on, so I'm going to pass it to him.
So one of the things that was not practiced as uniformly in the last round of turnaround as in a round of turnaround that was very successful was remediating every student during the school day as soon as the teacher was aware that they were falling behind. And so how to, to get teachers to be able to do that? So this, these assessments identify the children with greater accuracy than we could do before, that we had before. But the, the kinds of ways, for instance, the, the teachers would organize the school day differently so they could take these kids and maybe it would be a PE teacher who would remediate reading, but it would be during a period of the day where they could bring this child out. And they, they figured out incredibly creative ways to, to remediate during that same day. And I think those kinds of practices, if they're embedded in our turnaround under ESSA, stand a good chance of being effective. So the, the other thing that's kind of a, an odd finding here is that we're not finding summer learning loss as large for students with disabilities and English learners. Now why? Those, those students sometimes qualify for summer programming where the other students don't. However, we still find summer learning loss in the year-round schools. It's smaller, significantly smaller than in the traditional calendar schools. But I think those are all giving us little hints about what we should be looking at. And in making it intentional, it seems like it's just obvious that we should be remediating these students within the school day and finding a way to do that. But, but a lot of these lowest-performing schools are, are fairly chaotic environments. And without somebody in there and helping, the principal who's, who's probably about four times out of 10 in their first two years as being a principal, how to do that is very, very difficult within a school day. So it has to be intentional on part of the state to help them to figure out the ways to do that.
Vice Chair Duncan.
I want to make sure I understand or follow what you have told us. If I heard right, since 2014, our measurement tool has been the M-class assessments? And did I hear correctly that you've come to the place where you think that's a fairly reliable tool and has been reasonably accurate as a predictor?
So I, I would say, we would use, we try to use very careful language as researchers. I would even strengthen that. This is a surprisingly valid instrument to predict later reading skills of these students. And I, I did not expect anywhere close to this kind of percentage of accuracy. So for instance, at the first grade, if you would decide to use these data and target, I think we have the specific number of kids, you could focus your remediation not on a broad swath of kids or all kids, but target it to very small group and thereby improve their outcomes over the future using this instrument. And, and that, in the work that Jade has been doing and the rest of us, it, it not only predicts third grade, it goes to fourth grade. So it's, it's not just something that fades out within a year and kids catch up. If you were to target those kids with remedial efforts, then you stand a good chance of bringing them to proficiency by the third grade, which could produce the kinds of results in the, in the later achievement of those kids in, in school. So yes.
If we had to say or change the instrument tool, would that data still be comparable in the way it's been used by other studies since 2014?
It, it may, you know, if we had five years of those data and we could look at it, but to my knowledge, this is the only instrument that has been validated in this way. And so if you want an evidence-based practice in the future, the evidence we have is about M-class. And it would suggest this is an evidence-based assessment tool that's reducing racial disparities and allows us to target interventions at the first grade level.
Are there evidence-based assessment tools that are out there and available that you believe meet the levels of reliability that's sufficient or comparable to M-class?
So it's, it's a great point, Mr. Duncan. The, the, there are tools that are reliable, which means if you test two, two children who actually have the same skills, they'll test similarly. But validity is, is very unusual to have a predicted, ability to predict a child's outcomes in the future is not very common in these kinds of data, especially a teacher-based assessment. And it's the teachers that we really want using this assessment instrument because it's, it may be the reason why we see those racial disparities change because they're no longer making assumptions about some kids. They have data. They've recorded their assessments and those data do predict their third and fourth grade test scores. We haven't looked beyond that because of the age of the students. Yes, there's someone.
Can I ask that question? Could you clarify because I, I'm having a hard time with an assessment that's getting the results. And I want to be clear, it's the identification of the student after the assessment that helps us get this value.
So.
I guess it would help me for you to speak to the teacher role. So once I have the data as a teacher, what am I doing with it? Or are you saying that it's just the giving of the assessment itself that gives that any potential?
No, no, and I, I, let me try to be clear about that. What I think the assessment does is give the teacher information so she can differentiate. We talk a lot about differential or differentiating instruction, but we don't often do it or achieve it. But this assessment instrument would be our, our, our sense right now from what we know that the teacher armed with those data can do things with those children to bring them to proficiency. And I think what we've seen thus far is primarily the effort of those teachers with those data effectively teaching these teachers. I, I think what we're suggesting and on the next slide as an implication, is that if we were to use those data at, at the district level and help those teachers and figure out how to organize the school a little differently to even bring greater levels of support, we might find ourselves able to reduce these disparities and improve student third-grade achievement even more. But it's the extra steps, but it, it's critically, this is a teacher, what we call, I probably shouldn't even have said this, a teacher-mediated effect. It's, it's the teacher who's doing, bringing about the result.
And I can say one more thing about that. There is some research out there, and I can't call it, and you all may know it, where districts in the summer, employed in summer programs, their highest-producing teachers based on traditional year-round data. And their results were much higher in summer programming for those kids. It didn't always make teachers happy who might want jobs in the summer, but it was an invitation-only summer program where the district identified based on outcomes and those sort of residuals between, you know, end of year, beginning of year numbers were very different for those kids. I would look for that. You know, I might help us with that.
That's exactly the kind of thing we're talking about. It, you know, we are seeing evidence that students in schools across the state are falling behind, but we also know that there are programs in place in select schools, maybe even in some districts, that are trying to work to counteract some of that. I, the program you mentioned specifically, I'm not sure that it's in place here in North Carolina, but we, you know, we're in the process of trying to get more information about programs that are in the works and, and we would appreciate also any direct recommendations about any of those. Because we suspect that, you know, some of those programs are making it so that there, that's only that group of students that are falling behind. There are some students who are not at that point because some of these programs are in place. And while we see generally that there's these trends, we suspect that there are some specific exceptions and we think that they would be great to learn from.
So Dr. Henry, we're, we want to hear from you in summary before we switch over to Ms. Allred. So is there anything that you and your team want to close with before we tag-team and then perhaps we'll have a chance to have you all before of us right before we close out the afternoon?
Thank you very much, Ms. White. I, we've got 47 more slides, so I could summarize those quickly, but I, I won't. I, look, let me just make one more point to finish this part of the presentation, which is that, that the instrument here that, that we've seen is, is a valid and reliable instrument. And so I would say that anytime these things are changed, there's a learning curve. So this is after five years, so there was a pilot year and then we only looked at the subsequent year. So I think to be fair, if, if the instrument, if the assessment instrument changes, you can probably think that there's going to be a lag in terms of producing these, even if it's as valid, there'll be a lag in terms of producing this. I, I'd like to make just a, I'm not kidding, we did have about 47 slides, but I want to go through.
We're so sorry. We could, we just cleared the agenda, Mr. Chair, for all of tomorrow and bring them back and we'll talk all day about it.
No, if I could just say one thing about the current CSI schools, and I know you're going to announce them and I'm trying to skip through, but it's not catching up with me. The, the, one of the major issues that we think deserves a great deal of consideration are putting into place in these schools, no matter which schools are going to be announced tomorrow, processes at the school level to deal with the chaos of turnover. These schools are, are subject to incredible instabilities and they, there's not even a good way to monitor teacher turnover, novice teachers. a good way to monitor teacher turnover, novice teachers and teacher, and leadership turnover and retention. So, we feel very strongly that in the, in the comprehensive needs assessment, it should include teacher and principal turnover, experience, and effectiveness data for individual teachers. Using strategic staffing is, seems to have been the key in Tennessee toward making very positive gains on the part of student achievement. And the other piece of that, that I think deserves a broader consideration, is differential pay for effective teachers and principals in these schools. That has proven to be, or shown itself to be, a very important component of almost, of every effective school turnaround study that I have read. So, if you're going to make progress, one of the things that's very difficult to do is to get districts to pay teachers in one school differently than in other schools. But unless you reward the teachers for the extra hours and the extra work of working in these schools, it's very unlikely that the students are going to be served well and really have the kind of gains that you would like to see. So, we'd be happy to come back again, and I can explain that in about two hours if, I'm just kidding, but obviously, we're happy to come back at any time, Ms. White.
Well, just, we're going to put you on pause. How about that?
Okay.
And then we'll let Ms. Allred come to the podium to sort of walk us through. And, I mean, while she's coming, just the segue from the previous presentation about climate at each individual school and the things that can be done at the school level that impact what goes on in the classroom. Just, it's very impactful about ways, ways in which we should be moving to change.
I'm going to just say, let's forget my PowerPoint, and let me tell you a story. I am a North Carolina product. You cannot get more North Carolinander than me. Just listen. My voice is a North Carolinanna voice. I was trained in your schools. From the time I started first grade, because we didn't have kindergarten back then, I have been going to North Carolina schools. I graduated from North Carolina universities. I got my additional degrees, one of them at a private school just because it was close. And then I got my final degree, my EDS, at Appalachian State. But the fact of the matter is, I'm yours. I am a product of who you made me. I taught for 20 years, and I absolutely believed I was going to be a teacher my whole life because that's what I was called to do, and I still am. The fact is, though, in about 1980-something, absolutely everything went just bonkers in Raleigh, and they started this standardized testing stuff. And they were testing my U.S. history kids. And I read that first test, and I thought, you are kidding me. This is what my children are supposed to know? That's not what I was teaching. And so, I had my first encounter with alignment. I didn't understand what it was, because, you see, my principal protected me from everything that happened in Raleigh or in Washington. I had no clue. But I taught for the 20 years, and then I had gone back to school to get my administrative degree. Got my administrative degree and couldn't get a job in Gaston County where I had taught 20 years. Couldn't get an administrative job because, you know why? I taught AP. And nobody was qualified to teach AP and take my place, so I didn't get to be an administrator. So, I went Gaston County. It's right down here, right? Right there's York County in South Carolina. I had taught 20 years in North Carolina. Leave your retirement, just go on down to South Carolina and get your little administrative experience. And there I met Terry Holliday. He hired me to be his assistant principal at Fort Mill High School. The next 25 years, he was my mentor. We worked together in Transylvania County, well, at the high school, but then we had to split up. And he came to North Carolina and Transylvania, but he brought me back. The lie was something about, don't you need to work on your North Carolina retirement? So, I came and spent time with him in Transylvania, and then he went to Iredal Statesville. And during the time in Iredal Statesville, this is why you came to hear me today. I learned about the Baldrige Criteria for Performance Excellence. And in that process, becoming a national examiner and then a state examiner, I found out through examining healthcare institutions that there are processes in schools. And it is the processes that must be working well if you're going to get the results you hope for. I had to do all that other stuff to get that learning. We talk about, we educators have a real hard time when you talk to us about being a business, but we are. When you take anywhere from 35 to 85 percent of a state's budget, it's a business. So, how do we organize ourselves well enough to get the results we need to be sure that all the data that we've been talking about across this whole day, how can that happen? And then how can you consistently make that happen? After I retired in 2008 from Iredal Statesville Schools, I was chief academic officer by that time. And when I left, I said, never again. I am done. Do not call me for any reason. And two years later, Dr. Holliday had become commissioner of education in Kentucky. It is a hired position there, not elected. And he said, Denise and I are coming to North Carolina. Why don't you meet me at Lake Lure, and let's just have a little lunch, and let's just talk? And I thought, how cool. I'm going to find out what they're doing in Kentucky, and isn't this going to be great? So, and it was free lunch. So, we are out on this beautiful place overlooking Lake Lure, and Denise Holliday says to me at the very beginning, she says, just tell him no. Just tell him that you're retired. Just tell him you're not going to do this. But here's what he said to me. What would it take for you to turn around the lowest-performing high schools in eastern Kentucky? So, we're talking academically. I figured he wanted some ideas. And so, I said, well, I would need a team of three people. I would need somebody to coach the principal. I would need somebody to coach literacy. I would need somebody to coach mathematics. And I need about a million dollars so that we could do a lot of professional development just in time when we need it. And that team of people would have to stay in that school until we got it right, until we organized the school in such a fashion that it could get the results that it wanted to get. And he said, okay. That million dollars, is it okay if it's federal money? And I said, I don't care where the money comes from. It's federal money. We're not going to pay people with it. We're going to purchase service with it. So, in other words, that's one of our problems with grants, right? They run out, and then you can't continue the program. What we wanted to do was build sustainability, and that's why I'm here, too. We've written a book about it, because from the Kentucky Education Reform Act of 1990 until this year, Kentucky has had consistent legislation, and that's helpful. That was much of what I was going to talk to you about. Their legislatures have had all kinds of combinations of Democrats and Republicans, but KIRA did such a good job of defining what they wanted for kids and what processes had to be consistently right in KIRA, that every revision, they just renamed stuff. Same stuff, they just rename it. Okay. Anybody that's got a little bit of wisdom can read that and say, oh, that's how we're going to do support, or that's how we're going to do something else. So, prior to my going in 2011, you can tell, I'm not going to tell you that how he convinced me, I went. But I said, I'll stay three years. That's it. And promised me I don't have to go to the State Department. Just let me work with the schools. Let us just get that work done. The short of it is, one of the schools was so ready for organization of systems, and that's what we're talking about, management systems. That's what it is. They were so ready for it. They had all the component parts. Like, they had a principal who knew absolutely the daily life of every special ed kid in his building. And he talked to them every day about where they were in their goals. That's kind of cool people, they're doing this work, but they just weren't organized to get the kind of results that they wanted. So, one school was ready. They went from bottom 10 percent in, of proficiency in eastern Kentucky. Bottom 10 percent in 15 months, they were in the top 10 percent. You tell me that can't happen. It happened. I saw it, and I lived it, because all they needed was some organization about how we do stuff. When you take the data from this group right here, and you say, and I was in Iredal Statesville when this happened, when we started our first pre-assessment, we got the data back and started talking to the teachers, and they said, well, these 25 children just aren't ready to start school. Let's just have them stay out of the year. What? That's not what that means at all. We had to begin the conversation then with teachers at that school where all of those kids were going, is so, we know this, what do we do differently? And so, that's the way the conversation happens. By having systems, management theory, looking at the core systems that you have for delivery, how do you take a report like Ann Maddock gave you today in any given school, and how does your school use that report? What are the steps or protocols for taking whatever it is that's coming to you? People, we start over too much. We start over too much. If you talk to the average classroom teacher today, they are just saying, I got 25 years to go, or I've got five years to go. I love my kids, but this drives me crazy. Why? Because they don't understand the value of their work to the organization. So, how do you do that? Well, part of it is that you don't change everything. You realize which system it is that this thing is coming to, and then you put it through your system. I talked to your eight regional contact, yeah, those people. I talked to them last week, and we had this conversation about that. How do you organize in such a fashion that everybody knows in the state of North Carolina what exactly you're going to do, how it's coming to you? And that is, I'm leaving you today with two pieces of advice. One is, get a singular aligned message out of here, out of Raleigh. Everybody talking the same stuff with the same data, with the same voice, and it has to be aligned. The stuff that happens in, you can buy my book if you want to, Without Trumpets is its short name. It costs $30 on Amazon. I've got six copies with me tomorrow for six people that say, I want it. You can have it. I do that simply because, yes, my time's running out. Try this. Time, time, time. Okay, this one's better. But what I have told them is, you align the work. If you understand your system so well, who's the leader of your system, what's the mission of your system, et cetera, if they align behind your strategic plan, the one that you wrote, and they said they are responsible for Goal Two, if they're responsible for Goal Two, what's their mission behind Goal Two? What are the tasks and the responsibilities behind that? And then communicate that. In Kentucky, what has happened and the reason I tell you sustainability works. Kelly Foster, who is my co-author of the book, is the associate commissioner. I told you I wasn't going to Frankfurt to be a district anybody, right? That was part of the deal. Eleven months in, I had to go to Frankfurt. And the reason was to align the State Department. That was my job. I went there, and he said, you just need to get all these seven departments lined up. And so, I thought, well, I got 15 months left on my three-year commitment or whatever it was, and then I'll just quit after that. But I realized that alignment can happen. And once you align the work, then they continue to do the work through three commissioners, three in 10 years. Through three commissioners, through a total revamping of the board. This board was, that they have now currently, 11 people appointed by the governor, the person who's in charge of post-secondary education, and the guy who's the secretary of the workforce cabinet. That's what their board looks like. The board was totally replaced by this governor to push charter schools. They have charter legislation, but no schools yet, because they didn't get funding. So, they were certain that that was going to be the drive. Kelly Foster, when she found out that was happening to her board, started to look for work, and I said, you're crazy. You can prove that sustainability can happen. And she's doing it. This past month, she presented to her board, and her board, the same one that was chosen for the very purpose to get money out of the legislature for charter schools, their first number-one priority for funding is Kelly Foster's CSI program. Now, you tell me that can't be done in this day and time, and I'm telling you, it's happening in Kentucky. Now, have they got the kind of results they want? No. Heavens. You know, they had to go from bottom to top. But the fact of the matter is, they've got systems that are being consistent. And here's another evidence I'll give you. Under ESSA, outside groups can be employed to come and intervene in a school, right? I mean, that's part of the legislation. So, they were thinking that this would be another really good way, this new board, of getting for-profit providers into Kentucky. Guess what? Absolutely no school has asked for an external provider. They only want what the Kentucky Department of Education is providing. That model, because it has grown over 10 years, they know what it is, they know what's coming. It just gets adjusted for the new language. Systems is what I'm about. Systems is what the book is about. The systems in a school have been the same since my grandmother was a teacher in a one-room schoolhouse in Randolph County, North Carolina in 1915. She had to teach those kids. She had to be sure that they had food. She had to be sure that they got the curriculum, and she had to teach whoever showed up. The work has become way more complex, but what if we had just been getting better since 1919 or 1917? What if every year, we had just looked at our system and said, child nutrition, you know, it's not okay that most of our kids come to school hungry. It's not okay. What if, and Julie Pittman's from my community, and she taught my nieces and nephews, which is a cool thing. So, I didn't really know her before today. But all of that simply is to say that, no matter where you are, what you are thinking or what you are doing, if you had the idea that you were going to continuously get better instead of start over, where would we be? My favorite example, in 1971, my, the first year that I taught school, we had two faculty meetings about tardies. Couldn't get teenagers to class for any reason. They just were lollygagging out in the hall. See, I told you I was a North Carolina person. So, they were just fussing out in the halls, and so, we had two faculty meetings to straighten out the tardy thing. Now, I am from a generation that put man on the moon, invented personal computing and streaming music and everything else, and we can't get teenagers to class- streaming music and everything else, and we can't get teenagers to class even today. A hundred years from my grandmother, 50 years from my beginning teaching almost, and we still have at least two faculty meetings a year about tardies. Why? Because we don't have continuous improvement systems. That we don't take the work that you guys are doing every single day, those of you who are practitioners, look at it and say, okay, why don't we just twist this a little bit? The suggestion co-chair Buxton had a while ago about the summer programs. Look to see what's working. Do that. If it's not working, then change that. And it's not going to be a statewide answer. The creativity and the answers are local. Leslie County High School turned itself around in 15 months. They have a totally new accountability system, five stars. You can guess what that means, right? Do you want to be a one or a five? Five, absolutely. Everybody wants to be the top. Okay, Leslie County is not any richer than it was before. It still is old, dead, cold country in eastern Kentucky. But they started out in the new rigorous accountability, accountability system at three. I think that's a big deal. That's about continuous improvement. It's not about start and stop. It's not about just dealing with the bubble kids. It's about figuring out, how are we going to work so efficiently that we get the results we want? So from my time, I would just simply say, processes and protocols work. Looking at individual systems work. In the state of Kentucky, they have a state department that understands that they all have to work together. And if they don't and they're unaligned, then they're confusing the people out there. So I'm just asking you to think different. You don't have to vote a single thing off of anything I say. But what I can promise you, that I wouldn't be standing here at my level seven, you know I say that now because I'm 70, right? But 11, a level seven just sounds so much better. The only reason I'm still kicking is because I know this works. I saw it work. I saw it work at the school level. I saw it work at the state level. I even told legislators in Kentucky when my boss couldn't show up. I thought I'd die, but I didn't. When I had to report to the education committee about what I believed was happening in eastern Kentucky, and we just needed a little bit more money, we got it. So I'm telling you today, it can happen, but you've got to have a clear, aligned message. Your improvement plan, your strategic plan is awesome. If you're able to execute that strategic plan and everybody in the agency understands it, and everybody who is receiving is a recipient of, understands it, then the next thing you got to do is talk to the people in the legislature as you are doing it. What I told Kelly when she had all kinds of, Kelly Foster, when she had all kinds of changes around her, a new governor, new board, everything, I said, just keep your head down, do the work, and then tell the story of the children who are getting accepted at Harvard for the first time. So I say that to say, they're going to just shut us down. You have a huge job, but it is doable. And you can't give up just because somebody makes you mad.
Stay up there, we can have questions. I don't have a mic, but I do have a big voice. And so is there anyone that has a question for that very inspirational message of processes and planning?
Systems. Systems management, planning, management, and a lot.
Standard, standard operating procedure.
Yep.
Yes, ma'am. Questions?
Just a comment.
Okay.
A comment. I, I believe in everything you, you have just shared with us. I wonder if we need to do more in our preparation programs for principals around systems theory.
One of the, one of the areas, she asked about principals.
Principal prep.
Principal prep. The answer is yes on all this. One of the things I left out is we've got to quit blaming each other. We've got to decide we're all in this mess together. And so, you know, we're famous at it, and I was. As a principal, I was proud to tell everybody, all my teachers, that the problem was the district office. And as a district office person, I always said, well, bless them, that's the state. And at the state level, we're saying, well, you know, it's really probably the prep programs. And the answer is, yep, we do need to have more of that in principal prep. But if we don't have it, then it's the state's role and responsibility to be sure you've got something that coaches them while they're there. Our model did that because we had a principal coach. But they have hired a firm, I'm going to say NISSL, National Institute for School Leadership, and that, they do training of principals of low-performing schools for us, for the state department. So they, it's not, sometimes your, your state people don't have all the skills they need themselves, so you have to package out stuff that you know's got good, valid instruction. So, and the universities, that's a whole nother story. Y'all need to read my book. The universities want to partner with you, but we don't know how to talk to universities. And so, so that conversation, we've got to get us all in a room and say, but this is about our children. And once we get there, it's amazing what will happen. So the short answer to your question is, yes, there needs to be more about systems, I would say, for teachers and for administrators. Well, I thank you for being the, the remnant that stayed with me this afternoon. Clearly, I'll talk to anybody about this anytime.
Wonderful.
Susan, that is on?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if it's on or off. Susan, thank you. That was a wonderful way to end today, reminding us that we're all in this together and that only together can we succeed and overcome. And I so admire your comments about systems thinking as an engineer that taught the view of the world. And, and what it, what it reminds me is, whatever challenges we face, we largely made these challenges so we can solve them. And that's a great way of approaching it. And it's not about someone else, it's about working the system. Well, I hope you've enjoyed this day as much as I have. You know, we started with a terrific presentation by Chancellor Martin about the great things that are happening right here at North Carolina A&amp;T. And then we were challenged by Dr. Johnson, reminding us of the reality of our changing society in North Carolina and the country, and the opportunity we have to help our students become more competitive. He kept using that word, this is a competition issue, for our students to succeed. And then we got a great presentation about how to meet our students at the most basic of needs, ensuring that they have the nutrition and are fed in order, in order to be prepared to learn. And then we got a great presentation around the value and the importance of including the teacher's voice in, in decision-making and in instruction. And then finally, some good feedback about our literacy program. We should, we should bring children to kindergarten prepared to learn. We should help all children through the summer continue to read. We should have an accurate and effective reading diagnostic tool to equip teachers with what they need to, to teach children. And we should continue to make early literacy, literacy a priority. Because what we make a priority is what gets done. And then finally, the value of systems thinking and sustainability, how critical that is to helping our principals lead our schools. So I think this has been a wonderful day. It's exactly a piano design mistake so well. And we've got an equally important and I'm sure fun and challenging day tomorrow. We'll begin at nine o'clock in room 385 in this building. Okay? And if you park in the deck across campus, be sure to see Henrietta before you leave if you want to get your car out, because she'll have a parking pass for you. Okay? Thank you so much for attending today and we'll be back in session nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
Nice to meet you, Mo. I was 40. And I'll show you some of the things. No, yes, go rest.
Yes.